Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'd like to call to order the City Council Regular Meeting for the City of Jonesboro, May 12th, called to order at 6:05. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Don Dixon. Councilmember Powell.
Here.
Councilmember Miller. Councilmember Lester.
Here.
Councilmember A. Dixon.
Present.
We have a call.
Thank you all so very much. At this time, we'll have our invocation by Pastor Gary Lewis, First Baptist Church of Jonesboro. How are you doing today?
Good. How are you doing?
Good.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, and we thank you that you have a perspective on life no one else has, and we pray for these elected officials and the decisions they make and the discussions they have. Give them your wisdom and your discernment for your glory. In your son's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you all so very much. At this time, would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
At this time, council, there is an agenda before us. I would like to add executives, keep the executive session on here for the purposes of personnel matters. Anything else that needs to be added or struck from the agenda, or struck from the agenda.
Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to strike item B on the new business.
I'm sorry. Item B?
Correct.
The Jonesboro City Government upcoming event?
Correct.
All right.
And Economic Development Report, I would actually like to move that up before the report of the councilmembers.
And that should have been there. I'm not sure how that got out of order. Thank you. You see that, Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am.
I entertain a motion to accept the agenda with said changes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you so much. Council, we have a few presentations this evening.
Our first proclamation is honoring State Representative Eric Bell for successfully executing the inaugural signing die 404-day block party at Georgia State Capitol. This proclamation is honoring State Representative Eric Bell, where his engagement in community pride is a pillar of the thriving and inclusive democracy, whereas on April 4th, 2025, State Representative Eric Bell successfully executed the inaugural, I want to say, all right, signing die?
You have a signing die.
Signing die, 404-day block party at the Georgia State Capitol, creatively blending the traditional clothing of a legislative session with Atlanta's celebrated 404 cultural pride. And whereas this groundbreaking event united citizens, Jews, families, public officials, and community leaders from across Georgia to celebrate public service, culture, and community. And whereas Representative Bell's leadership vision and commitment to connecting government with the people is service exemplifies the values of successively innovation and community empowerment. The City of Jonesboro recognizes the importance of such a story that is fostering civic pride, youth involvement, and a greater sense of unity across Georgia. Now therefore be proclaimed that I, Dania Elsar, Mayor of the City of Jonesboro and City Council, do hereby honor and commend State Representative Eric Bell for his outstanding leadership in successfully launching the inaugural signing die, 404-day block party, encouraged all citizens to celebrate the importance of achieving public service and community engagement. And within thereof, I have here I am to set my hand upon the seal of the City of Jonesboro to be a fixed breath base man. Is, I wanted to make sure, Laurie Smith here? Mr. Rich Walter, please. Mr. Rich Walter, are you the president?
I'm the Chief Impact Officer.
He's the Chief Impact Officer for the Jewish Federation of Greater Atlanta. One of the things that we worked with with the African American Mayor's Association was a collaboration with the Combat Against Antisemitism movement. So I had the opportunity to travel to California to just look at how we can partner the African American community and all communities along with our Jewish community. And so, May is Jewish American Heritage Month, so we want to give this proclamation to you on behalf of the City of Jonesboro. Whereas since their arrival on American shores as early as the 16th century, Jewish immigrants and their descendants have played a vital role in shaping the United States, contributing to the nation's creation, growth, freedom, prosperity, and enduring strength. And whereas the biblical and historical journey of Jewish people and the enduring values of the Jewish faith have served as powerful sources of inspiration for the founding principles of the United States, the civil rights movement and the civil rights movement and America's leadership in advancing global freedom and the nation's ongoing pursuit of Jewish justice and equality. And whereas Jewish Americans have made profound and lasting contributions to every aspect of American life, including art, science, businesses, law, education, safety, entertainment, and culinary traditions, enriching the cultural fabric of our nation and helping define what it means to be an American. And whereas for over four decades, Presidents of the United States have formally recognized the invaluable contributions of Jewish Americans to our country. And since 2006, the Month of May has been officially designated as Jewish American Heritage Month through presidential proclamation and bipartisan congressional support. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Dania Elsar, the Mayor of the City of Jonesboro and the City Council do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Jewish Heritage Month in the City of Jonesboro, Georgia. I call upon all residents to join and celebrate this remarkable history, heritage, and contributions of the Jewish to our city and our nation. I further encourage all city departments and agencies to commemorate this occasion through public announcements and the display of educational materials. Also encourage in our local schools and colleges and universities to offer programming that highlights Jewish American heritage, as well as museums, libraries, and cultural institutions throughout Jonesboro, Georgia. And within thereof, I appear to set my hand upon the seal of the City of Jonesboro to be a fixed this 12th day of May 2025. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Me also, I wanted to just make a note that the Combat Against, that their organization along with African American Mayor's Board, he gave about $20,000 in scholarships this past May, June, no, April, when we were in D.C. And all of those went to students that were going to historically black colleges and universities. So we appreciate your partnership. Thank you.
Thanks. We also have a program in our organization bringing students from HBCUs in the metro Atlanta area together with Jewish college students to try to bridge some of that understanding and gap too. So, thank you so much for this recognition and at a time where Jews are victims of rising levels of antisemitism. It's greatly appreciated by our community to be recognized here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Very wonderful date later on, the mayor gets a chance to travel with the delegation to Israel to further create power. So we'll keep those chief, we don't want to let him go. All right, so what we have yet, never get, what is this last one? Laurie, she's not here. Do we have our proclamation recognizing Georgia City's Week?
That was senior.
Marcus Hertz is not here with us, but I have a certificate for him. On May 15th, he'll be graduating from Carl Beston Institute of Government with his Certified Public Manager Certificate. That certificate is 300 classroom hours. He started it about a year ago, and so he completed that, so we want to congratulate Marcus Hertz. He's not feeling well today. And also, our lastly, I have Mr. Andrew Simpson, if you would come forward. This is your certificate of completion, that certified that we proudly present to you, Mr. Andrew Simpson, for completing the Atlanta Regional Commission's Community Planning Academy Spring Training for Planning officials.
Sir.
Because we have five classes, four classes, along with people all over the metro area. So we appreciate it.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for joining us here at the Jonesboro City Council meeting. This is our second year having the Jonesboro Youth City Government. And just for background purposes, the Jonesboro Youth City Government comprises of one youth mayor, six youth council members, city managers, youth city managers, director of communications, the whole nine pretty much mirrors local government. And we are recognizing our seniors this evening. We have five seniors graduating. Four are here, I'm sorry, three are here this evening. And we just want to bring them forward.
So all the seniors, come forward.
Anybody about us, please. We have Ms. Susan, if you have this, that, or the other.
Ava Peterkin, graduate of Martha E. Stevall School of the Arts. Congratulations. Isaac Hathaway, Jonesboro High School. Sayana Vidal, senior graduate from Utopian Academy of the Arts. Miss Ella Abedia Abadia.
Abadia.
ABD. Riverdale High School. And Aliyah. I hope not, Mr. Councilmember Dixon, I like these anymore. Jelly, Riverdale High School. Those seniors that aren't able to be with us, we want to thank Councilman Dixon, as well as all the youth advisors. We hope it's been a very rewarding experience for you all. Your work isn't done. I've got some little things I need to wrap up, but we definitely appreciate you on behalf of myself and the entire council for serving this year in the spirit of the pact. And again, we wish you best of luck as you all go off and do great things. Remember, always come back and let us know how much you all feel about it.
Can you share where you plan to go to school? Where you're going to go to high school?
I probably go to Lincoln State. Actually have a full scholarship for the Open Field University. I'm also deciding for St. Jackson State.
And then we look forward to those college graduations. Again, if you have a real resource, recommendation, or anything that you need from us, we still have your family and wish you all the best.
If y'all can, if y'all go. This is, we had a project maybe our first year. We went to the garden and we planted a few things, and we actually spent the whole year watching them grow. So as they go off into the new spaces and new places, I just want them to continue to nurture the seeds. Continue to nurture the seeds.
Again, thank you so much.
We have McKinsey here, our director of communications.
At this time, we'll have public comment. I want to make sure I didn't miss anything. I didn't miss anything. And we have one, Dr. Garcia. You're so big. Hello, Dr. Garcia.
Mayor, City Council, thank you for having me, allowing this public comment. We're here today in support of the city and the wonderful events that you guys continue to have. And we've been supporting the community events for many years. And this year, I wanted to present this check to you all today and also to make the public comment to encourage the continued support of these types of events because they're so important, not only to the members of the city, but to visitors, to the businesses, and everybody who gets to participate in them. And they have been wonderful, and we're going to present this check to you today.
Sir.
I want to come down and get a picture with that. Dr. Garcia has been extremely humble. I'm going to estimate Shelby's going to help me. Dr. Garcia, over the last three years, probably has contributed pretty close to 30 to, I don't know, probably closer to $50,000 in all of our events, not just the Hispanic Heritage, the Back to School Event, the June Team. So, and then, this is a business necessary, not necessarily within our city, but really, we really appreciate you. Words cannot describe.
And it is reciprocal. I do appreciate it. One of our core values for my practice is community. And so, this is something where, you know, I've been practicing 23 years, taking care of patients, and it's always been a part of my practice to give back to the communities in which we serve. And this is something that I enjoy doing very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know we are. And I might as well go do the shameless plug commercial. His closest office is on Terry Boulevard, is that address? Dr. Garcia, your address.
Terry Boulevard, 62348 and a half, Terry Boulevard.
And that's where the mayor gets her address from. All righty, with that. Great, thank you. There you go. Okay. Madam Clerk, we're ready for public. Thank you again. Dr. Garcia, I'm sure Andrew wants to thank you again, but just thank you again so much. Not just for the check, but just for everything you do for our community. That just make my heart go good. All right.
A public hearing regarding conditional use permit application 25 CUP 002 by applicant Jessica Sullivan to register a business for a professional training school of plevotomy and EKG certification program in the C2 Highway Commercial District. The property is located at 118 North Avenue, Suite J, Jonesboro, Georgia 30236.
Is there anyone here to speak on that public hearing? Do you want to give comment? Come to the microphone.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
I just want to say that I'm really excited about having this opportunity. And I've been praying really, really hard that it's a dream come true because I've been wanting to be a teacher and open my own school for, I know, 10 years now. And I finally was able to be able to bring it forth, so I'm excited. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Is there anyone else here for public comment? I now consider that public hearing closed. Madam Clerk, we have a number of approval of minutes.
First one, council to consider approval of the minutes from January 29th, 2025, public hearing number one.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes for January 29th?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so very much. Just one clarification. This doesn't include the set of minutes that we don't have attachment for, does it?
Right.
Okay, it's not on here. Okay, perfect. Item B?
Counsel to consider approval of the minutes from February 3rd, 2025, public hearing number two.
I'll entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
Counsel to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
C. Counsel to consider approval of the minutes from March 3rd, 2025, work session.
Counsel, I entertain a motion to approve. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, counsel. Next.
Counsel to consider approval of the minutes from March 10th, 2025, regular council meeting.
Counsel, I entertain a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, counsel. Almost there.
Mm-hmm. Counsel to consider approval of the minutes from April 7th, 2025, work session.
I entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, counsel.
Counsel to consider approval of the minutes from April 14th, 2025, regular council meeting.
Is there, all in discussion?
Yes. You know what? I guess just under the public comments where it says Jonesboro resident, if we can just make that say Jonesboro.
Yes.
Youth Council.
Can we accept those minutes with said change? Or do we have to go back and then come back?
It can be accepted with said changes, noted changes.
Okay. Are you all okay with that? So, can somebody remake the motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Counsel, make sure your microphones are on. Before we go any further, I want to just give a shout out to our madam clerk for getting on top of these. We're hoping that all of these are done, that we won't be looking at five or six of them. But thank you so much. You worked really hard on those immediately after the meeting to get them done and get them before the attorney. So we appreciate that. We have a consent agenda. I entertain a motion to adopt the items on the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, counsel. Any opposed? All right, consent agenda. We're now moving to old business.
Okay. Counsel to consider approval of conditional use permit application 25 CUP 002 by applicant Jessica Sullivan to register a business for a professional training school of plevotomy and EKG certification program in the C2 Highway Commercial District. The property is located at 118 North Avenue, Suite J, Jonesboro, Georgia 30236.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Counsel, is there any discussion regarding this matter? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you so much, Ms. Sullivan, congratulations. Next item on old business.
Counsel to consider approval of a memorandum of understanding agreement between Clayton County Water Authority and the City of Jonesboro, Georgia, regarding Terry Boulevard Storm Water Rehabilitation Project.
Mayor.
Yes.
Mayor, the Clayton County Water Authority found that this was already approved by the City of Jonesboro Council and signed by Mayor Day in 2022. And then Ms. Wethington actually looked through the records and found our independent copy of this. So this has already been addressed. And the Clayton County Water Authority thinks that it's adequate. And I think it's a binding contract, so there's nothing we can do here.
So there's no need for a vote or anything?
No need for a vote. It's already taken care of.
All right, thank you so much. Item C?
Counsel to discuss Hero's Crosses for Memorial Day.
Counsel?
Yes, this is just following up on old business from last week in regards to the crosses for Memorial Day. See if there's an update.
So we'll do the field of flags like we did right now with the construction and not being able to get in and out to get all the flags out. We didn't think, and I don't know where we would have stored them, to bring them out before they started the construction. All right. Item up on the new business, item A?
Counsel to consider approval of a road closure, Church Street from Riley Way to Sims Street, regarding First Baptist Jonesboro's Family Fun Day on Sunday, June 22nd, 2025, at 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Counsel, this is for consideration of the annual Family Fun Day that Jonesboro First Baptist has. They're requesting that that section of Church Street between Riley Way and Sims be shut down for pedestrian traffic so that we don't have anyone that inadvertently drives through and strikes any pedestrians that's going from The Rock over to the business offices. So it's just a matter of safety.
Counsel, I entertain a motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Bentley, make sure you get that on all of our schedules, please. Send us an invite. Thank you, Pastor. Look forward to the event. At this time, we'll have our Economic Development Report from Mr. Andrew Simpson, most recent graduate from the Planning Commission.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, Council, staff, and those remaining in the audience. Appreciate you being here, and those watching at home. Okay, so, this is going to be like a thank you for Georgia Cities Week to the IDDA Board and Promotions Committee. You did a fantastic job supporting me. Swin's Feed and Supply, thank you to everyone there. Uh, Swince Feed and Supply, thank you to everyone there. Uh, the Patis Garden Circle residents for the community pop-up, and Be Mary Events, and the vendors for the sip and stroll. Our Springfling concert was greatly appreciated by the crowd, it's the most enthusiastic crowd that I've seen. Thank you to Councilman Lester for being there, and Councilwoman Miller and Councilman Dixon. Appreciate you doing that. Special thanks go, as always, to our police department, Clayton County Sheriff's Office, our food vendors, and everyone that attended. Um, the Kentucky Derby event was a great success. Um, the artisans market had their opening day on Saturday, but sadly it rained, so everybody left. Uh, but the people were there, seemed to enjoy it, I got feedback from those that were there. Um, we're probably looking at a bigger crowd and vendors for June. I will keep council informed about how that goes. And again, thank you for the Methodist Church, um, and the Jump Program for, for helping and promoting with that. Um, just as a reminder to everyone, our Juneteenth celebration is on Thursday, June nineteenth, and the Independence Celebration will be on Thursday, July third. I'm still working on getting a support act for the Independence Celebration on that. Anyone you know, just let me know.
Get what?
Get a support act. We have the main, yeah, we have the main, but we do not have a support act due to the fact that it's in July.
Schools are out.
That schools are out. So if anyone's watching, they went, oh, yeah, I'd like to have like a youth group come and do a performance, that would be great. Um, you can contact me at events@jonesboro.g a dot gov. Thank you. Um, we are still working on the dumpster pad in the Broad Street parking lot with Whitley Engineering. It's still carrying on. Um, you'll notice with the business licenses that we are getting rather a slew of auto brokers coming into the community in two particular areas of Jonesboro Road. Um, our businesses, um, it's more like a turnover, so one business is closing, like, um, a beauty service, and then somebody that they know then comes in and then takes it over. So it's the same sort of business, um, with that. Um, we are, I'm still monitoring Ray's Place on Jonesboro Road, the restaurant, um, that used to be the jam rock from years ago. Um, they seem to be doing rather well, and they now have barbecue, uh, just in case anyone's interested in going up there. So that, that's very positive. Um, and, um, belated Happy Mother's Day to everyone that's been here. Does anyone have any questions? Yes.
Um, you mentioned the auto brokers, what else could you see in that area, or what would you have us to do? Should we just have a conversation with the two of you and Ms. Cameron? Is it, um, other businesses that will probably be, um, better in that space? What's the bill?
I think from a landlord's perspective, if they're paying rent, it, it's great. The state are looking at auto brokers at the moment, and looking at the size. Maybe restrict the size of certain, uh, auto broker buildings, as far as that's concerned. Um, I just want it noted that we had six in March, we had another six open in April, but it seems to be a constant turnover. There's very few that's consistent. Um, so...
And we also add that an auto broker, just, I didn't know this until Andrew schooled me, but their, their cars aren't there. It's basically the law just requires that they have to have a office space, a address, and so most of these people are going to get these cars from auctions, and the cars will never make it to the city of Jonesboro.
Yep.
So it's just like what's required, so, because at first I was like, oh, they're going to be car lots everywhere, so it's not a car lot, it's a car broker, like a real estate broker. They just have to have a space and a place to check off for the, um, state. But we will follow up just to make sure we're getting all the revenue.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, Ms. Cameron?
I, I just want, I do want to add though, the problem that we are having is the fact that they are bringing those, those cars on the lots to repair. So we're having a, a big, and, and Andrew won't know this until, you know, until we talk about it, but the problem with having so many of them, they're actually having cars pulled to the lot, and they are actually doing repairs illegally.
Well, the addresses that I saw, those weren't lots, those were...
No, those are offices.
Those are offices, and so they're not bringing cars to the offices now. I can't control if they go to such-and-such Auto Repair and get the car repaired.
So, so it won't be, they won't, they're not being, they're, they're actually parking them in different places in the city, is what we're finding out.
Okay, yeah, that, okay, okay, so we can work on that problem from another perspective, but they're in compliance with their office space and everything, yeah.
Absolutely, and, and so to answer your question, um, Councilwoman Miller, what could help the city is to put a distance, um, or proximity requirement on them, because there's so many, and, and the turnover is not really profitable to the city, and that's the concern that we have.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Want to talk about the...
If I may, if I could be invited to those conversations, because I have some input on the auto brokers as well.
Okay, this is the person I heard of, but we'll, we'll schedule a meeting.
Ms. Cameron also has something to say about the commission?
What commission?
Historic and design review.
Just applications, we just want the public to know our citizens, that we have, um, applications available. We have opening on our boards, on our Historic Preservation Commission, and also the Design Review Commission. We do have applications available, they can see Andrew or myself.
Alright. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you so much, Andrew. Um, now we'll have a report of our city council members. Councilman Powell, do you have a report?
Not today.
Councilman Don Dixon, do you have a report?
Not at this time.
Councilwoman Asia Miller.
Um, I just want to say, thank you to our staff, as always, um...
Sorry, turned it off. Thank you, um, to our staff, as always, for being so amazing, we appreciate you. Um, thank you to Representative Bell for all he's doing to move the culture forward, I'm still very appreciative. Um, I also want to say a Happy Mother's Day, belated Mother's Day to all the moms out there, and also please just keep our mayor prosem and her family in your prayers. And congratulations with Jessica on your wonderful new venture. Thanks for speaking to City of Jonesboro.
Councilman Lester. You okay? Nothing? We'll come back when we need to. Councilman Alfred Dixon.
Uh, yes, just echoing what most of my council members have said up here already today, um, but also want to say thank you all for pouring into our future generation of leaders. Um, it's very much appreciated, the seeds that we're planting will blossom into something amazing, so just thank you all for sticking it out. Uh, the Jonesboro Youth City Government, um, next meeting will be next Monday here at the city center. Um, I know that we, I know that the state delegation, um, or the Clayton delegation has a town hall, uh, that same day. Um, so I would love it if everyone can come out, meet your delegation, meet the Jonesboro Youth City Government, and just, uh, for some good fellowship.
Thank you, Councilman Dixon. Few things, May is Mental Health Month, but it's also a national initiative moved with the mayor. So our staff is doing a initiative to move with the mayor, and so they've been challenged to do four movements, that's three, they have to do three twenty-minute walks and one meal prep class, and they'll be able to get a gift card, so we appreciate that. On May twenty-eighth, we're having a quarterback committee meeting. If there's any council member that would like to serve on that, there's an opening for one. Um, the quarterback committee, are you...
I haven't invited, I'm going to...
Oh, well, never mind, okay. Well, I think we might have that, we might need a backup, though, thank you. Um, street closures for the Fourth of July and Juneteenth, just keeping you all informed that there will be some memos going out to all residents part of Lee Street and up and down Spring Street, just letting them know, the street doesn't have to be closed, Smith Street, the street doesn't have to be closed for the entire event, but I think twenty minutes before fireworks start, there'll be no passage, so we'll make sure. So if anybody says anything to you, we'll be getting that letter out to them and hand-delivering that as well. We have a senior luncheon, we had it last year, hosted with the Clayton County Social Services, that'll be this Friday. Um, also National League of City Council Members, if anyone is interested in attending the National League of Cities, it's in November, the nineteenth through the twenty-second. Um, we may have some funding for that, it's in Utah City, Utah. I think Councilman Dixon went with us last year, Andrew Simpson went with us this year. They mentioned the Juneteenth, as well as July third, and also, um, not that I'm supposed to toot my own horn, but they said I'm supposed to. I was just notified today that I was selected for the two thousand twenty-five Regional Leadership Institute through A R C.
Yeah, it is.
Are you alumni? I think you're alumni, aren't you?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, Councilman Dixon went before me, so there's over fifteen hundred RLI alumni, usually it's about twenty thousand applicants, two thousand applicants, so I'm super excited, and that begins in September. And we're moving forward with our Southern Cities Economic Initiative, we've had our first boot camp. Again, thank you to Andrew, Mr. Simpson, Ms. Cameron for serving on that, we're super excited. Um, it's eight forty-three, six forty-three, um, I would like to entertain a motion to go into a very... Go ahead, Councilman Dixon.
Thank you so much. Uh, just wanted to remind everyone that, um, to get your submissions in for the newsletter.
Oh, correct.
And Jonesboro Youth City Government applications are open. Um, if you have any youth in grades ninth through twelfth grade that would love to be involved in a leadership program, please apply. You can go to W W W dot youthcity G O V T dot com, and all the information will be there, okay? Thank you.
Alright, now entertain a motion for a very short executive session.
So may.
Um, all in favor? Any opposed? We're now in, we're now in executive session.